Oh, and Merry Christmas. It's your old pal Brian Carr from up the road and welcome to Warren First 931. On our terrific Tuesday, Kelly is in house. So she is overseeing everything, but she has got a lot of elf chores to take care of. So she's getting the Christmas spirit whipped up for you behind the scenes, but I'm here to just to be the peace. Not the piece of coal in your life, but the peace, peace, man. Good morning, everybody. Hey, guys, I know you'll be joining us here as the day goes on. But hey, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year because it is December and hey, we got a lot to talk about. And first off, we want to talk about this beautiful sunny weather we got here in downtown McMinnville. Thank you to Tops Metro Deli for allowing us to use your beautiful studio and right behind us in downtown, we've got the beautiful Park Theater. And currently right now in McMinnville, it is 34 degrees with a high of 48 and a low of 27. So make sure you keep those plants inside. It's going to be partly cloudy until about one o'clock today when the sun will really come up. But you know, it looks really nice right now. I got a lot of sunshine on my back. Tomorrow it'll be windy with a high of 50, low of 32 and Thursday, 41 degrees with a low of 28. Hey, thank you Reddick Brown Ford for being our weather sponsor. Have you driven a Ford lately? And I keep telling myself I'm going to stop over there because I see all those awesome cars. Santa might just have to see about taking a test drive for one of those. Hey guys, we've got a lot to do today. We've got a lot of good show to give you. And as I look down here at my list, we're going to go to a commercial break, but come back on the other side. As we got so much to talk about and there's some school stuff we need to clarify and make sure that you know what's going on. All right, guys, remember, keep it first.
Located at 601 Bursheba Highway, McMinnville, or give them a call. Welcome to our coffee drive-through located at 601 Bursheba Highway, McMinnville, or give them a call at 474-1776. At our coffee, we pour love into every cup of coffee we serve. Welcome to our coffee drive-through located at 601 Bursheba Highway, McMinnville.
Don't know what to eat? Have you tried Cumberland Biscuit Company or Tops Frozen Yogurt and Metro Deli? Down on Main, you can enjoy pizzas and sandwiches, weekly combo specials, soups, salads, and finish it up with Tops Frozen Treats. On the weekends, check out Cumberland Biscuit Company's unique dishes like the Twisted Goat Burger or the Bambooshka Burger for lunch or dinner. Get the experience of going out of town right here in McMinnville, down on Main. Follow Tops and Cumberland Biscuit Company on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
When you need help with your medical needs, who are you going to call? At Stacy's Wellness Pharmacy, you're not just a number, you're a part of our community. When you call Stacy's Wellness Pharmacy, you'll get a live person to help answer your medical questions. In a hurry? Try our convenient drive-through. Not able to get out? We offer free delivery within the city limits. Stacy specializes in Mr. Stewart's over-the-counter and prescription cough syrups. Need to transfer your prescriptions? It's no trouble to transfer to Stacy's where people care and wellness matters. Stacy's Wellness Pharmacy is located at 485 North Chancery Street, or give them a call at 474-0600.
Some call it Pioneer Country.
Some call it Tree City.
Some call it the WC.
We call it home.
From the first showing to the final signature.
From downtown charm to wide open fields.
Warren County isn't just on the map. It's where dreams are made.
Because when you're buying or selling in the WC, you deserve someone who gets it.
Make my mom your winning choice for buying or selling real estate in the WC.
Let's make your next move, your best move.
Hey guys, welcome back. It's Brian Carr here, downtown McMinnville. Thank you Tops Metro Deli. We're so blessed to be here and be able to tell you what's going on here in the Tree City. And we've got some comments from our good friend, Miss Tina. She goes, ho, 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 Brian. And that's right. That reminds me of this joke I heard the other day. They said, what does Santa like to do in the garden? Ho, ho, ho. So there shouldn't be any weeds in the garden, but you would think Santa would get tired of doing that. But thank you, Miss Tina, with our coffee. And hey, our coffee is one of our great sponsors. Go see Miss Tina, go get you one of those pink drinks that Kelly likes and, and ask for the 2.0. That's Kelly's recommendation. But hey, everything I've had from our coffee is great. And what's even better is we love Miss Tina. So thank you, Miss Tina, for joining in with us today. Hey guys, we've got so much to talk about. And one of the things that we really want to talk about is the Warren County School System and their schedule. Because a lot of people may not know when they're going on break, but it looks like, and we're going to share this screen if we can get it on here. We're going to add this to stage and Brian's going to minimize. Come on. Before pressing, remove other media. All right, let's, all right, all right. Here we go. Now I'm gonna. All right. So guys, this is the Warren County Schools' calendar for the 25, 26th school year. And if you'll see, and I'll try to blow it up just a little. Right here, here we are, Tuesday, the ninth, guys, in just a few days, the school year is going to be over. And this day, the 19th, it is an abbreviated day. So they'll come from 7:45 to 9:45. And to my understanding, it seems as if because they just attend for those two hours, it will count as a full day for them. So that's, that's my understanding to this. Oh, look at who we have here. Let's kind of pull this back and put. There we go. Good morning, Miss Reese. I hope you're doing well today. And she said, good morning, Santa. So hey. That's funny because when I'm at the hospital, and we'll talk about the hospital here in just a moment. No one remembers Brian, but they do remember Santa. So it's great. And guys, I apologize about the glare that's on the back. It is really sunny compared to the way it was yesterday. And hey, we might have a good friend come over here in just a little bit. So keep your eyes peeled. All right. So yes, on this, on the 19th, Warren County Schools will have a half-day. And to my understanding, they will get credit for that day. So just remember, and there's a lot of kids that don't show up. I've heard varying things and we'll try to get the right information. But I've heard some people, just like the last day of school is a, is the same day, an abbreviated day. I've been told that a lot of times the attendance is not, not as. I'm not going to say not as important because you'll never hear me say not going to school is a good thing. But, but I think they were lax is the good word for their lax when it comes to attendance on these abbreviated days. Now I know at the Warren County Middle School, they'll be having the band performances on that day. And that's always a fun day and even Santa might show up for that day. But that's what's going on in the school system. And speaking of the school system, let's see if we can go back here to Warren County High School. They haven't really updated anything that I've seen other than, and we'll flip over here, put this tab up and see where we're at here. They've got their Warren Weekly Podcast that's going on and we'll give you the scoop on that. Catch all the festive fun holiday highlights, student features, and seasonal surprises in this week's special episode. And they've got a link to their YouTube channel. Don't miss the holiday spirit in Warren County. Tune in, share, and celebrate with us. So that's our young people for Warren Weekly. We did talk about the Ayers Foundation yesterday and with the Burger King Scholarship. So we've gone through several things that have gone on at the Warren County High School. Sports is always a big one that's going on. And guys, if you don't have the Warren County Pioneer app, you need to go ahead and get it. Santa's going to take a look here real quick and see if there's anything that we've missed out on. I know I was getting a lot of dings and pings. And hey, want to let everybody know that match day, that is tomorrow on December 9th, will be Blackman and Laverne. So the three schools will all wrestle. And if this starts at six o'clock and this will be in Laverne. So we want to encourage you, if you can go, go on out there. Also, yesterday, it looks like the, the boys' basketball wound up, and this is the middle school basketball. Wind up winning 35 to 26 against Tullahoma West. And then the boys JV Middle School team wound up winning 24 to 17 against Tullahoma West. We've also had on December 6th, we had an away game. And this is, looks like the Cookeville JV wound up winning against our boys, 48 to 27. And on December 6th, our varsity team, oh no, I'm sorry. It's the freshman team wound up playing against Cookeville and Cookeville won 44 to 26. Now, this looks like our JV team, you know, we've got so many JVs and freshmen and everybody, but these were. Our JV team wound up winning against Stone Memorial JV, 77 to 25. And then we had our JV team lose to Upperman JV, 27 to 47. And then our girls on December 6th wound up playing, and this is the, looks like JV against the York JV, and they lost 38 to 47. I'm trying to find, and this is what I'm trying to find here. So December 5th, we wound up winning a big one. And I don't know if you got to see this or not, but our boys' basketball team won in the, in the closing minutes of the game, 60 to 58 against Siegel. And that was exciting. You can always go to the Warren County Sports Page, take a look at that. But I tell you, one of the fun things that I like to do is go to photographer Brent Carden's page. He's always got some really cool stuff and catches a lot because he's there at the games, catches a lot of video as well. And so we're, we're really blessed to have him and then Paint of our Media and the different folks that go. But Brent Carden does an excellent job in covering and catching all the behind the scenes stuff as well. All right, let me get back to where we're at. All right, guys, we're going to go to commercial break because we're looking like we're going to have a guest join us here in just a few moments. But until then, let's see, let's have some fun with our holiday sponsors. We've got some holiday video coming up from our sponsors and I've got my good friend and pioneer controller. Miss Kelly right behind. So hey, make sure to join us at the break and remember Warren County, keep it first.
Holiday season, Reddick Brown Ford is sending warm wishes to you and your family and to say thank you for an incredible year. Brakes, tires, oil changes, transmission fluid, and more. Everything you need to keep your vehicle merry and bright. And that's not all. Drive into the new year with select three models priced at just $1 over cost. Celebrate the season with savings and service.
At CD Media, we capture the spirit of the season with cozy Christmas portraits and family gatherings to couples, seniors, events, and every milestone that matters to you. No matter what you're celebrating, your story deserves to shine. This Christmas, give the gift of timeless photos. Book your session with CD Media, where every moment becomes a memory.
Randall Walker Farms wants to wish you a very Merry Christmas and a joyful holiday season. This year, we're grateful for the support of our neighbors, customers, and everybody who believes in shopping local. From early mornings in the fields to the customers from the window, we're proud to be a part of your holiday traditions. May your season be filled with warmth, laughter, happy holidays from all of us from Randall Walker Farms. And give us a call, 635-9535.
This holiday season, Sonic Drive-In is grateful for you. Thank you for choosing us to be part of your memories. Wishing you a joyful, flavorful holiday filled with happy moments and good cheer. From our Sonic family to yours, happy holidays and a fantastic new year.
The year is coming to a close and Gateway Tire and Service Center wants to help you roll into the new year with confidence. Whether it's fresh tires for winter roads, a full vehicle service, alignment or brakes, our team is here to keep you safe and moving forward. As we welcome 2026, we're grateful for our loyal customers and this incredible community. Thank you for trusting us with your journey every mile of the way. Start the new year right. Stop by Gateway Tire and Service Center where we're more than just tires. We're your gateway to a smooth year ahead. Happy New Year from Gateway Tire and Service Center.
This holiday season, Custom Vinyl Signs and Shirts wants to say a big thank you to our amazing customers and community. Whether you're creating the perfect gift, designing a custom shirt, or bringing your holiday ideas to life, we're honored to be a part of your celebrations. From our family to yours, we wish you joy, peace, and a Merry Christmas filled with love and creativity. Stop by this season and let's make something unforgettable together. That's Custom Vinyl Signs and Shirts. Call us today at 668-3372.
This is Susan Bain with Tree City Realty wishing you and your family. May your home be filled with peace, laughter, and love. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from Tree City Realty.
Thank you to our wonderful sponsors for being able to allow us to be able to bring all this good information to you guys. Hey, it's Brian Carr with you here back at Warren First 931. And we got a special guest. They're coming, but not down the chimney. We're going to see him here in just a moment, but currently, right now, in the Tree City, it is. Let's get back, Brian. Got to get on it. 35 degrees now. We've moved up one, one degree. Still highs going to be 48, low at 28. It's saying that it's going to be partly cloudy until about one o'clock. But guys, if you look behind me, not many clouds in the sky, a lot of bright sunshine. So hey, this is our, from our weather sponsor, Reddick Brown Ford. Have you driven a Ford lately? And guys, if you ever get the chance or if you think, or thinking big now, big presence. So if some of you guys got to get out of the doghouse, why don't you go over there and take a look at some of those vehicles? And ladies, if you want to treat your husband to one of those big old trucks, and hey, I know there's a lot of ladies who want that. So if there's a good man that wants to get his wife a truck, go see our good friends at Reddick Brown Ford. Thank you guys for being our weather sponsor. Guys, so much going on this weekend. Our friends at the Park Theater, they've got the Crooners Club tonight going to be performing. And I can't, I don't know a lot about it. So I can't wait to find out more. And we should have some more information on it, but we've got so much going on. So I'm going to take you to our Warren First page. And we're going to share this tab. We're going to put this on the screen so you can see it. And who do I need to remove? All right, remove that one. There we go. That one, there we go. So you didn't catch it yesterday, we had our Budget and Finance Committee.
That was, that's the, that you're reading right now, Budget and Finance is tonight.
Oh, Budget and Finance is tonight.
The one that we posted about yesterday, they, it was a missed, if they did the wrong date on the calendar.
Okay, so guys, this is.
Last night's meeting that we went to was actually also today's.
Okay, so those are scheduled for today. So.
So we're only doing Budget and Finance tonight because we can't do both.
Excellent. Only doing Budget and Finance Committee tonight. All right. Small Town Tennessee, McMinnville Christmas. Let's see more about this. This is, visit McMinnville. And look, this is so cool because we've got so many functions going on. And I'm just going to read through these so you can hear them. For those of you that are listening via just audio podcast. This is Christmas week in McMinnville. There's so much holiday magic happening all week long. Here's your festive lineup. Wow, we've already done the eighth. So let's start with Tuesday, December 9th at 6:00 PM. A White Christmas, a White Tree Christmas at the Park Theater. And speaking of the White Tree Christmas at the Park Theater, the man, the myth, the legend. Come on in here, Joe Harvey. And let me pull this screen down so they can see your beautiful face. Tilt this camera just a little. Look at this guy. And guys, I apologize for the glare. Joe Harvey, it's always a treat to have you here. How are you, buddy?
I'm doing good, man. Good to be here, good to be here.
Well, Kelly always tells me, when you're doing the show by yourself, it's much easier to have somebody. And she's right.
Oh, yeah.
Because when you're working the controls on this thing, when you're trying to lead up into something, when you're hitting something, you just don't want to have dead air. So if you've got somebody else to banner with.
It's, you, you have someone else to talk about the subject that's on hand, not, for me, I would be talking about whatever technology I would be using. They're like, oh, yeah, yeah, no, sorry. I've got to do this little thing. I've got to tweak this minute detail and all this technology that I'm using. You have no idea what's going on. So yeah, I get you totally off topic if you, if you don't have somebody here with you, just talking about whatever the subject at hand may be.
Well, it just so happens the Park Theater is the subject at hand and that's what we're talking about. And so tonight, we've got the White Tree Christmas going on at the Park Theater. And it's sponsored by the Crooners Club.
Yeah, the Crooner Club, they're the ones performing in it. That's, it's their, their event. It's a, it's going, going to a great program, the Fuel Program at Warren County Middle School. That's what it's funded. So it's, it's not only is it good music tonight, but it's also going to a good cause. We've got a lot of events like that this, this season. But yeah, the Crooner Club, this is their first time doing it since, at least since I've been on staff. But I'm super excited about it. It's the, I'll be honest, I love it because it's really musically, I feel like it's feeling, filling in some of the gaps that Hark at the Park doesn't fill. All those classic crooner dudes that we love, you know, Bing Crosby, Frank Sinatra, all those men. I think it's going to be really, really great. I'm really excited.
Now, do you know much about the Crooners Club? Because this is the first I've ever heard about them.
I, I knew they existed. I have yet to seen them perform. So no, so this, this will be my first experience with them as well, but I only hear good things. So.
Well, that's exciting because first off, to know that we have a Crooners Club, but to see what they're doing to help. Because my girls go to the middle school and that's one of the things that the baby club at the middle school does is they pack the fuel bags for the kids. And for you guys that don't know anything about what the fuel packs are or anything like that, these are bags. And I think Jimmy Haley got this started with one of the things that he was doing. They take all the, all the resources they can. They, they buy granola bars and the food from the cafeteria that they don't want to waste. They, they all assemble, they put these bags together and hand them out to children every day, every day that they're at school. So they'll have something to eat, take home with them. And so I think they call it snupper sometimes.
Yeah, like something, it kind of bridges that gap for anybody who might have food insecurity at their, at their home. But it's, yeah, it's a great program. They always say, every teacher, every administrator will tell you, you can't teach a hungry kid.
Oh, no, no.
We gotta, we take that into consideration, got to be sure to try to fulfill that need the best we can. And this program, it definitely helps do that. It's a very, very important part. We love seeing, we love seeing good causes like this helped.
Well, I might have to slide in there late. Santa's going to be running around. But that's something that I would love, love to see is the White Christmas.
I think my schedule is bad during this season. I can't imagine. Would you look like this? I can't imagine how crazy that schedule gets.
Look, I've been getting up and having to put on my makeup and this was the morning that I was like, I can't do it. I, I've done it so much in the last few weeks. This is, this is my no, no, no day.
How do you, how do you choose when you do the full makeup and when you do, do you do like a kind of a more natural take?
When I'm running, when I'm running around, but listen.
I mentioned photos, you, that's when you really want it up. You want it, you want to, you know, make the features a little more.
Oh, yeah, definitely with the photography. I go all out. I gotta, I make sure that the mustache is tweaked in the right spot and everything. Sometimes that can be a pain. But I'll tell you, yesterday I had a great event. And it was, it's a non-paying event. It was, but it was an opportunity to brighten some days. I got to go over to one of the local schools here of some kids who really needed to see Santa. And I thought, man, I could just go as, you know, T-Moo Santa, or I can give them the real Santa.
Not T-Moo Santa. You're, you're better than that. You're better than that. You, you, you work hard for, for, for what you do. And you, you're giving it all you got. I see you do it and you give it 100% you got. You work hard as Santa's helper every year, man. You kill it.
Well, thank you. I, I try my best. It's, it's really fun, but the things that you see and just how Christmas is, it just comes once a year. And everybody gets excited for it. And so when you have events like this, like a White Christmas, because that, for those of you don't know, it's the, what Danny Kaye of Bing Crosby movie about these guys trying to save a Connecticut ski lodge or something like that from going under. It's, it's a, it's a great story, but it's, it's a cherished and historic story. So a lot of our young people don't know about things like this. So whenever we have events like the Crooners Club, and I love hearing that. Because I'll tell you, if you guys get to hear Mark Pyburn sing, when he says, he is like the modern day crooner. I love. He's, he's the Michael Buble of McMinnville, Tennessee. But people love to hear that because they're, they're not getting it most of the time throughout the year. And even, and jumping on that, one of the things that we don't have very often is we got on Thursday, the 11th, we got an evening with Jeremy Wilson and friends. So please tell the folks about Jeremy Wilson.
The way I've been describing Jeremy Wilson is on the Mount Everest, or the Mount Rushmore of musicians from McMinnville. Jeremy's there next to Dottie. It's Dottie West and Jeremy. Like that's where I played. Jeremy was an incredible musician. He was, he was a part of the Philharmonic for years. He's played all over the world. And he's now a professor of trombone, professor of trombone at Vanderbilt University. So incredible musician, incredible guy too. If you ever get a chance to sit down and chat with him, he is, he's just the nicest guy. The incredible being, love hanging out with him. But he's an old friend of mine. He was in the high school band. When we were in the high school band together, all the marching shows that we did, they were all based around him doing solos. Like it was, it was, it was the, it was Jeremy Wilson and the Warren County High School Band is the way it really ended up being. It was, but it was so good. He's a, like I said, he's an incredible talent. And this show is, well, it's really special because like, not only you seen a world-class musician, but it's also a free show.
Oh, sure enough.
No charge. We're going to open the doors. It shows at seven. We're going to open the doors at six. It's first come, first served. So we want, and we want everybody to come with their whole party. We're not going to be letting people like save seats because we want to, we want to make sure everybody who wants to come in can come in. And we want the seats down front filled. But this whole show was actually the idea of Doug and Sandra Hands, who were the architects of the Park Theater group. That was, they originally had the idea of bringing the Park Theater back to life, making it a performing arts center. And they were inspired because they got to go see Jeremy in New York at Carnegie Hall.
Oh, wow.
Carnegie Hall is where he was performing. And like they were, this, this story that they share is great. They're, they're sitting, you know, they're in their seats at Carnegie Hall and they're, they're chatting. They're like, oh, I can't believe, you know, Jeremy's getting to play here. And the people in front of them are like, they turn around, they're like, someone from your hometown is playing here tonight, like on the stage? And they described it as like, that's the equivalent of someone from your hometown being the starting pitcher in the World Series at Yankee Stadium down the road. So that's, that's how big of a deal is. That's, that is the, the level of performances he's been part of. He's like, he's just incredible. And he's so entertaining. Like you think you don't like classical or trombone music. Come see this show. It's, it's, he, he's always been an entertainer. And I expect no less of him. He's bringing the trombone choir from Vanderbilt. He's bringing a pianist. So he's going to have a bunch of Class A musicians with him. It's just going to be a great night and it's free.
Oh, my goodness. That's awesome. Well, I'm going to encourage all my young people, especially those that are in the band, to come see this. Because this is what you aspire to be. And we've got one right here from McMinnville, Tennessee. I tell you, you know, you hear like our sports people, you know, when you were talking about starting pitcher in the World Series. We've had one. We've had that too. We've, we've had one. It's not like these guys fall off trees with Cat Walker.
Yeah, I said, we can, we cannot diminish the accomplishments of Cat Walker by any means.
And he won that one game for Detroit. That was the only, the only game they won against St. Louis in that World Series. But no, seriously, this is amazing. And I'll tell you, Joe, and we'll talk about one. seriously, this is amazing. And I'll tell you, Joe, and we'll talk about one of, one of these events, we'll, we'll lead into this with this one. Because our next event, who is the piano player? His name is Scott.
Scott Camp.
Scott Camp. He's from McMinnville as well.
Yes, yes.
So guys, I got to go backstage and watch these guys practice. And Scott Camp, we were doing a men's choir. And Scott was getting us on the right pitch and then had started playing behind us and started playing the music. And it was incredible. This guy just goes to playing. And then I find out a little more about him, just like Jeremy Wilson. McMinnville is loaded with those generational talents. We have somebody that that shows up. And so we've got the free concert with Jeremy Wilson on Thursday. Then on Saturday, we have one of my favorite events that all, all the year in McMinnville, Hark at the Park. Tell us about Hark at the Park this year.
This is year number 17 of the event. It wasn't always called Hark at the Park. The first four or five years, we did it at the library. But this is the 17th year that we're raising money for the Hamilton Street Activity Center and the Magnus Library. It's been a fundraiser for those guys since the beginning. Michael Steve Harvey was the architect to that. He, he put it all together. He originally started with Scott Camp, who you were talking about, my brother Kevin and our cousin John Harvey. And they, they did the Charlie Brown Christmas in its entirety. That was, that one was great. I keep telling them, we need to beg Scott.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Do that another year. That was, that was, that was a great one. But, but yeah, and it, it has just kind of grown from there. We, they added me the next year. That might have been a mistake on that.
Oh, no.
But, and they added, we've just kept adding, you know, all these great talents from our community, you know, we, we, we love bringing back people who, who've moved away, like Chuck Jones comes back most years. And he, he'll, he'll play with us on, on Saturday. We kind of, he's part of the backing band, and John always does it, my cousin John. Kevin will be there. He'll, I, I think we're going to be able to talk him into doing the Grinch.
Oh, my goodness, guys. If you've never heard Kevin Harvey sing the Grinch on top of playing an upright bass as he's singing that song, it's, it's incredible. Now, tickets for this, are they sold out?
It's not sold out. There's still tickets available. Yeah, McMinnvilleParkTheater.com, which for all your tickets for the Park Theater, always go through McMinnvilleParkTheater.com. If there are tickets on sale for an event, we have it listed there. I always, I always put this PSA out there. You got people out there who are doing, they'll, they'll put bots up. And you might actually get sold a legit ticket to a Park Theater show. But if you go through some of these third-party sites, if you just Google Park Theater, it might take you to a site that they'll charge you an extra $40 as just being a middleman. So we, we always want to say McMinnvilleParkTheater.com. It's the best place to get your tickets, McMinnvilleParkTheater.com.
We're going to post the link right here and let people.
And there's a, at the very top of the page is a button that says tickets, and that has all of our shows listed. But anyways, there are still tickets available. So yeah, they're not sold out yet. And if you, when you're buying your tickets, if you want to add on, you want to give a little extra, we're throwing a little VIP reception right before the show. It'll happen at the Magnus Library. So you can go to the Magnus Library, you know, have some hors d'oeuvres, have a cocktail maybe, and then roll across to the, the Park Theater right after for the show. So it's, it's a full night of, of entertainment and good times. We're going to start at 6 o'clock this year. We, last year, we had to kind of do a whole little like shift because of the, the football schedule that we were afraid was going to pull people away. So we shifted off that weekend completely. But we did, we did a little earlier last year. We liked that. We thought everybody kind of would appreciate on a, on a Saturday, everybody's real busy, you know, get you out of there a little earlier, get you home. I know all the days turn, turn really long this time of year.
Oh, my goodness.
I know my day yesterday was really long. I started very early. And then we, we had, we had, we had a great show with the, with the jazz band last night, though. Got to, got to throw out props of the Warren County High School, Pioneers of Jazz. I did not get that name right on the marquee.
Pioneers of Jazz?
The Pioneers of Jazz, they did a superb job last night. The, the group is always great, but that was the best I'd heard of them in years.
Well, some of my friends, Grady and Walker and those guys, we had them on earlier in the year. I mean, it's almost been a full year since we had our one-year anniversary for Warren first, and those guys brought it. And now they've had another year to marinate. And so it's amazing what these young people are doing and having a great show. So we've got so much music going on. Speaking of, and I was going to tell everybody that before Hark in the Park, over at the Southern Blue and Barren Pork Brewery, Santa is going to be there taking pictures. So if you want to pregame it for Hark at the Park, go ahead and go on over there. And you can always come across the street and go to Tops or grab, grab something over here at Tops or any other places downtown. But right around the corner, there's going to be photos with Santa. So if you haven't got to see the Southern Blue, you need to come on over. It's pretty cool.
It's a very cool location. They're doing, doing great stuff over there. Love that spot.
And then same thing on Sunday.
Yeah, I was going to say, we got another, another big one on Sunday.
So we got White Christmas. We got Evening with Jeremy Wilson. We got Hark in the Park. And then we got not one show on Sunday, but two shows on Sunday for the Santa Sing-Along. And.
Love the Santa Sing-Along.
Listen, I don't know what to tell people about the Santa Sing-Along. It is, is the craziest thing.
It's, it's, the way I've described it is it's, it gives you all those good feels of watching some of those like holiday TV Christmas specials. It's that kind of feel to it. It's just all the things you love about Christmas, the good feels, the meaning of Christmas, the songs, and then, and you finish it off with, with, with a great piece. We won't spoil it for everybody. But it's, Santa comes to town. It's a great thing for kids. We, man, we, we had the field trip shows. I literally sent a text message like right as things were going to have, like engage children losing their minds. Because it is like The Beatles on Ed Sullivan in 1964. When, when, when these characters come out, the children love it, and they just go crazy. And it is such a good time. Like I said, it gives me all those good feels that you get from some of those classic TV specials. So thank you for, for putting that together and bringing a really cool, it's, it's, it's a great value of a ticket. It's not a super long thing. So, you know, you don't got to keep, you think kids are going to lose interest. It's just a, a great event, and it's a great show to, to come and bring the family to.
And at the end, you can get a family picture with Santa and the cast afterwards. And you'll have that memory for the rest of your life and, and more importantly, your child's life. But one of the great things I love about this show, and this is the extended show, because in, in the school shows, we're, we only have so much time. We got to keep the kids engaged. And I think we do a really good job of that. But for the family show, we're going to have Mr. Mark Pibburn and a few other folks going to be joining us and singing some songs. So when we talk about the White Christmas Crooner, that's, that's the first name that pops off in my head. And maybe, maybe Mark and I can join the Crooners Club someday. I would love to be able to sing that type of music.
I bet you they're taking some applications for, for, for folks like that. That sounds, that sounds like a good time.
But we've got so much going on just at the Park Theater alone, just this week.
Yeah, that's just this week. That gets you to Sunday. And then we've got more next week. We've got Daily Vincent coming on Tuesday, that which, there's still some tickets available there. I think we're only, we've only got stuff left in the balcony on that one. But.
Oh, yeah. Let's just go ahead and plug it right now. Daily Vincent, next Tuesday, a week from today at 7 o'clock.
Yep.
And.
Grand Ole Opry members, Grammy Award-winning musicians. Just, it's a great show. And when, when they approached us about this, we're doing it, they, they've come here before. The show was incredible, great job. And then we knew we would want to have them back. But then when they approached us with a Christmas show, we knew we couldn't turn that down. We knew we had to have it. It was a total sellout last time. It'll probably sell out this time. We're getting real close. If you want tickets, you should go there now and get those tickets.
And then we've got on Friday, December 19th, 7:30, Boys in the Band and Alabama Christmas.
Yes. This is the third time this, this band has been here. They're, the premier tribute to the band Alabama. So, and they're, they're actually from Fort Payne, where Alabama's from.
And from Fort Payne, Alabama.
But yeah, Christmas in Dixie, baby. Christmas in Dixie.
Now, Megan Garwood says, Daily and Vincent are good. And she made a comment earlier, but we were, we were so into the, I think she was talking about Jeremy Wilson and his son sings good, too. Thank you, Megan, for being on with us today. And thank you, Donna Carr. I have to admit, when I was a kid in Martin, Tennessee, my dad played football at UT Bar. That's how we wound up getting there. And we had this big old record player. And one of my earliest childhood memories about the record player is when my mom would put Christmas in Dixie on. And that has always been one of our favorite Christmas songs. When you think about how Christmas is celebrated around the world, and we're, we're very lucky. The weather changes here. We have seasons. And every once in a while, we'll have a White Christmas. But there's just something about Christmas time here. And we've got Boys in the Band coming for that. And then, hey, let's just go ahead and, and, and talk about New Year's. We are going to have New Year's at the Park Theater. And that's, that's exciting because how many times have we got to do that, especially here of light?
We, we, we did it once the year before last, and it was a good time. We were kind of testing the model. We were seeing, hey, would people come to this? Would it work? And it worked. We had a good time with it. And this year, on, on top of it, being an event downtown at the Park Theater on New Year's Eve, this one's going to be a benefit for a good cause, the McMinnville Children's Museum. They're putting this event on. They've, they were nice enough to ask the Joe Harvey Band to come, come be a part of it. So I'll be there playing that. We're going to have a DJ as well. It's going to be fun, flow in time the, the entire night. So, yeah.
Do we know the DJ?
Is there going to be a timer this year?
I have not heard if there's going to be a timer. I don't know. Yeah, no, I'm not, I haven't heard about one if there is going to be one. So, but I definitely don't consider me to be the gospel of that. But I know we're going to do a countdown at the Park Theater. So I can guarantee that.
So, yes, so the Joe Harvey Band along with a musical DJ of some kind, there were probably all kinds of things going on with it being a, a, a benefit event like that, folks talking about. And this is the McMinnville Children's Museum, which we've had them on here on the Warren first before, talking about things. And yeah, we, we'll talk about the. You're good, bud.
Trying to see everything here.
If we need to make it bigger.
DJ Matt Mercer. I didn't want to get that name wrong. I wanted to make sure I got that name right.
All right. I tell you what, we'll just go to it and let everybody see. DJ Matt Mercer, cocktails or mocktails, Light Bites, Midnight Champagne Toast and a Sweet Sendoff to 2025. Step into the red carpet. So there's going to be a step and shoot. Guys, I think Warren first might need to help with this one right here. Get a little social stir going, going on. But yes, all, everything goes to help the McMinnville Children's Museum because they're in need of building a place or having a building. And so we want to help make that happen for the STEM projects that they are so encouraging to help our children with. That's a good thing for the community altogether. And that will start at 8 o'clock, and it will last till 1 o'clock in the morning if you can stand it. I'm just thinking about the Joe Harvey Band shows and face, face melting shows.
Do you remember how often we play? It was, it was no big deal for me to take a gig where I would play from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And that was, I mean, that was like regularly every day. If I did 10:00, 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM on a whim now, I would be dead for a week. I would like, you'd have, you'd have, you'd have to bring out the paddles and shock me back to life after that. Woo, I keep like, oh, the things we used to do when we were young.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
We can't get into that here. We can't get into that. It's a family show.
So last year, my girls wound up spending the night with the Collier girls or your girl, somebody, somebody. And I thought, man, I'm worn out. And so I crawled in bed, I guess it was maybe 10 o'clock, and looked over at my wife and said, you think we should, you know, tell them we're going to bed or do you think, you know, we, we really, we used to stay up all the time and, and make a toast or something like that. But they weren't with us that night. And Sarah's like, forget it. We'll send them a video. So I got this video telling them how much I love them. And I hope we have a great year. And then we went to bed, man. The black lights were out.
You literally phoned it in. I love it.
We, we did, we did phone it in. Megan Garwood chimes in. She was talking about Mark Pibburn's son about, and Mark Pibburn's son, Jaden Pibburn is an amazing singer. And he would be a great Crooner. That would be a young man. Now, I know they're up in Johnson City, Tennessee. But he's got family here. We know how to get him. Speaking of which, speaking of talents that have gone off, and good morning to our good friend, Mr. Derek Coats. Kelly, we're going to have to talk about Boxing Day. And, and, oh, Derek, he goes all out. First off, he's English. Secondly, he, he knows how to make all the recipes. It's been in his family forever. And so mince pies, different, different foods that you don't traditionally get here in Warren County and other places. But he goes all out for his Boxing Day event. So we're going to talk more about that here soon. We're going to have to have him on. But I'm pretty sure he's out running around with, with as nice as it is right now. But Joe, if you could have anybody come back and do a show, somebody who has McMinnville ties.
Oh.
Who would it be?
Well, I always say that, I told Doug and Sandra, when they came to us with Jeremy Wilson, I was like, you just, you beat me with punch, is what they did. Because I was, that was, that was one that I'd love to have. Gosh, gosh, man, you put me on the spot. Oh, yeah, I, I would love to see Stanton Adcock come back and do, do a show here with us. That's a, that's a, an old friend I need to reach out to and see, see who he's, you know, he, he plays with so many different people. He just posted, posted today, he wrapped up the 2025 tour with Jessica Simpson today. So, yeah, I'd love to see him come back. And he could bring, you know, whatever group he wanted to. I, I think it would, would do well. But, yeah, man, there's so many, so many great talents that have come out of here that we need. Some, some have played there, some we need to have back, like Chip Green, we need to get Chip back in the building.
Is he in Canada and Montreal?
In and out. I think he, but he still has his Nashville roots there. So, but yeah, we, there's so many talents. But yeah, Stanton is the one who comes off, that was first comes to mind when I think of people who haven't played here that will need to get back. So, yeah, man, there's, there's, there's talent in, inside and from Warren County. So we, we always need to, to celebrate it and bring it back and, and show it off.
Megan Garwood writes, Kelly Walker used to belt out some notes. I think she needs to do a local boys' talent show. I bet it would raise a lot of money. And Megan, you're on to something. But let me ask you, since we got him here, last year, during the January, in the January 1st to February, we had the music. Are we going to be doing that this year?
The songwriters, it's going to be early February is when that's going to be. But, yeah, actually, stay tuned. We're, we're probably about to announce the signups for that. So, yeah, no, thank, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we are going to have the Tennessee Songwriters Competition. It's going to be back here again this year. We're a qualifying round, and the winner gets to go on to a, a final round at the Franklin Theater. And then the winners get to play at the Bluebird. So it's a, it's a really cool event, and we're, we're really glad to host it. You know, it brings a, a pretty good crowd. It's always a, a great chance to, to see some of that local talent. And sometimes it's local talent that we don't know anything about. It's, I've, I've had people come to that event and do really good. And they're like, this is my first time playing out. Wow. So I'm always floored by that, man. So, yeah, there's, there's, there's all kinds of talent. We, we, we do look forward to seeing them shine again at, at that event.
Well, we're excited. And Joe, thank you so much for being on with us today because there's so many things that are going on at the Park Theater.
Being right across the street, I should be over here more, man. I'm sorry.
Well, look. Well, he's staying so busy. And I mean, here we are just at Christmas season, but during the summer season, when we got mainstream McMinnville music going on. And then that, that's another thing that, and a few times that whenever the, the park unexpectedly has to be the host of music because of weather or whatever.
Well, yeah, we, and I need to get back in here with you guys next week. We got all kinds of stuff coming this spring. And we need to, people need to be looking, if you're looking for Christmas gifts for the rest of the holiday season, there's all kinds of stuff coming this spring, including a bluegrass series that we have. It's, it's, it's three tickets for the price of one, or three tickets at one price. I'm sorry, I should say that, that we're selling right now. It's three bluegrass concerts, Balsam Range, Becky Buller and Backline. They are all going to be three great bluegrass shows. If you're looking for a gift for a music lover. They are all going to be three great, uh, bluegrass shows. If you're looking for, uh, a gift for a music lover, lots of different options. There, there's that one. There's, we've got funk. We've got, uh, rock. We've got country. We've got all kinds of stuff over there. So I need to come back and talk to you guys about that. I need to go, go through our entire spring schedule with you. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll plan for that. Maybe, maybe I'll hop back in here next week.
Well, hopefully some, and listen, I, I wanted to see what we could do about getting, uh, maybe, uh, the boys from the band or Daily and Vincent. And, uh, and getting a link and maybe interviewing them, uh, like we've done before. I really enjoyed, uh, what we were able to do with, uh, the Wayland Jennings, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Tribute, uh, band. That was really, really good with, uh, with having several of the original Whalers.
That was a great, great show.
The way that show was set up with the interviews.
Yeah.
Leading into the stories, the live stories and then playing the songs. Ah, what, what a great evening for, for Warren County.
That was a good time. It's, it's the, it, it's a celebration of his life, celebration of his music, his art, and then a celebration of the guys who backed them up all these years. It was a great time.
Well, that, for, for me, it, getting the, getting to talk to Carter and, uh, and, and the length that, that, that.
It was great seeing Carter and Barney.
Well, guys, we're going to go to break. Make, make sure to join us on the other, uh, side. I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly to get us, uh, prepped and, and ready to go. But remember Warren County, keep it first.
Dining in or taking out, we've got something for everyone. From our mouth watering brisket, baby back ribs, juicy rib eye steaks, special tea sandwiches and fried chicken tenders. Your taste buds are in for a treat.
Don't forget our weekly specials. Monday spaghetti or hamburger steak. Tuesday meatloaf or barbecue chicken pork. Wednesday pork loin de chowder steak. Thursday smoked chicken house or country fried steak. Friday fried catfish or Cajun catfish on rice.
Whether you're feeding hundreds at a company picnic or meeting a friend for lunch, you can count on Raiders to satisfy your taste buds.
Call us at 635-2259 and taste the tradition at Raiders BBQ. 30 years of excellence.
Ready for the fall at Randall Walker Farms? We have pumpkins and delicious apples, corn stalks and straw, perfect for the seasonal celebrations.
And now it's the perfect time for planning. Come explore our selection and get your home ready.
Visit us today on Manchester Highway or call us 635-9535.
Randall Walker Farms, your destination for plants, pumpkins, apples and more.
That's Randall Walker Farms, 635-9535.
Tired of riding around in a dirty car? Let us, TNC Auto Detailing, give you your vehicle the deep clean it deserves inside and out. We're not just another auto detailing service. We're a team of young entrepreneurs bringing convenience right into your driveway. We come to you offering a fast, affordable and reliable clean that treats every car like it's our own. Call us today at 931-356-2096, or you can text 931-356-5056. TNC Auto.
Oh, 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 welcome back. This is Brian Carr with Warren First 931. I got the captain back behind the camera here. She's busy getting things worked up, doing all kinds of stuff, but thank you for joining us. Thank you for being on. And thank you, Mr. Joe Harvey and the Park Theater for being on with us. Guys, we live in such an amazing community and we're so blessed to have wonderful people. And the way I described Joe is God made him for this job and he is showing out because all these shows that we got going on with the Cruders Club tonight, the benefit that they're doing for, uh, making, uh, money to, uh, provide fuel bags, uh, for our blessed children in the Warren County community. You can't beat that. Uh, also we got the Daily and Vincent Show going on, uh, next week and the Boys in the Band. And hey, this Sunday, we, uh, let me take, start Saturday, we got Hark in the Park. And for all you guys who've attended Hark in the Park, you know how big of a benefit that is. And then we got the Warren Arts, uh, collaboration with Park Theater. And we've got the Santa sing-along, two shows, two o'clock and five o'clock. Uh, you won't, you won't want to miss these, but especially your kid won't want to miss them, uh, because they are so exciting. And they're not too terribly long. I mean, look guys, it's wrapped up in under an hour, but you're going to get your money's worth because tickets for children are only $5. So make sure that you make plans to get out this weekend and come on downtown and see our good friends at the Park Theater. All right, guys, we got so much. And hey, I don't know who Maude 234 is, but good morning, Maude. And I can't see the picture and I'm, I apologize. I got so much sun on this.
It looks like a guy.
It, it does look like, it looks like a gentleman.
I'm thinking about the Nativity Festival coming up this week.
Oh, yeah. And, and that starts Friday, right? Okay. We've got even more things to tell you about. We've got the Nativity Festival that's going to be going on this, uh, this Friday and Saturday, uh, going on at, at, um, it's, uh, off Shangri-La Lane and it's, I believe it's at the LDS Church, uh, there. Yes, right across from Trager and Equipment. And, uh, our, our good friend, Ms. Miriam Crawford has invited us to come, uh, be with them on Wednesday. And so we're going to do a pop in and let folks know, uh, what's going on and how you can get there, all the ins and outs and specifics. So join us Wednesday or be looking at the Warren First, uh, webpage, especially at the Facebook site. And you can find more information on that. Speaking of the, uh, our, uh, Warren First webpage, let's go to that because guys, we have so much stuff to talk about. And Brian, come on, you just had it up here. And guys, I got so many screens up. Yeah. Let's just close them out. The, here's the problem, uh,
Four boxes up compared to you from. You better mind. You look blurry because you got so many boxes.
Well, I, I, I've got my email up here. I got, let's close that out. Let's close out. Um, yeah. And the, these things take, uh, uh, I got my credit score. It's crazy. Um, all right. Not that one. It keeps bouncing around. Come on, guys. We can do this. Warren First. Let's go here. Now let's share this tab instead. And we're going to run through the Warren First tab here, let folks know what's going on here at Warren First. Let me see where we're at here now. Let's add this to stage. All right. Warren First. We've got so many things going on. There we are, right there. All our good friends, the budget and finance. We were, we were talking about small town. That's where we left off. And then we had our good friend, Joe Harvey come in. All right. We got the Thursday, December 11th evening with Jeremy Wilson. And then Friday, December 12th from Five Day, McMinville on Ice coming out to the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Uh, warm food, sweet treats and hot cocoa by Bain's Greenhouse Farm, uh, Sweet Minis and Blessed and Baked. All right. Then we got, it's starting at 5:00 PM, the McMinville Nativity Festival at 562 Shangri-La Lane. And then on December 13th, Christmas Tea Party for Children at the Bonnie Blue Inn. That's going to be happening this Saturday at 11 o'clock. From two to four, it's a Santa meet and greet with bouncy houses and more at the Southern Blue and Baron Forks Brews. Might think I know a little something about that. Uh, again, that's going on from two to four. And then at 3:00 PM, back at the McMinville Nativity Festival, if you weren't able to make it on Friday, or if you just like it. And to my understanding, there are hundreds, maybe even a thousand nativity scenes out there. And look, guys, you can't get enough of Jesus. That's for sure. So join our friends over there, uh, from three to eight on Saturday. We're going to have McMinville on Ice at the, um, Farmer's Market Pavilion. And that's going to be going on. They're going to have the food and stuff, uh, as well. At 5:00 PM, you got second Saturday holiday edition. So there's going to be vendors that are staying open here on Main Street. We also have, as Joe Harvey said, Hark at the Park. And then Sunday, they're going to open up the McMinville Nativity Scene one more day, starting at one o'clock. And that's going to be at 560 Shangri-La, Shangri-La Lane. Uh, so bundle up, grab some cocoa, enjoy a festive week here in McMinville. Let's make the holiday seasons magical. So that is, uh, what we got going on here. And if you could go to the hashtag Christmas in McMinville, you'll see that. Also, oh my goodness, you see this guy right here. What's Santa doing? Okay. Well, let, let me tell you folks what Santa's doing. Santa was over at, uh, Helen's on the Green last night with our good friends at River Park Hospital, and they were having their employee Christmas party and it was a great time. Uh, had a lot of, uh, of wonderful moments where we got to talk about, uh, what was going on. And, uh, this was our correction for the planning commission, uh, meeting going on.
Courtesy of Terry Bell to let me know a little bit.
Thank, uh, thank you, uh, County Executive Terry Bell for.
They do answer their phones.
For giving us the, the update and, and correction on that. Um, but that will be today. What?
Okay. So let me go over quick to the page because there's several, there's two meetings for sure tonight. Okay. So at 5:00 PM is the joint meeting budget and finance.
5:00 PM joint meeting budget and finance.
And then the Warren County Regional Planning Commission meeting that is scheduled for the eighth is actually supposed to be scheduled for today at 5:30. So the regional planning commission's meeting at the highway department.
The regional planning meeting is at the highway department at?
5:30.
5:30.
But the joint meeting with the budget and finance and all them is at 5:00 PM at the administrator.
And the joint meeting with the budget and finance is going to be at the administrator building at five. Okay. So we got a lot of stuff. We'll try to keep you, and listen, we can always have one of these commissioners come on and give us the scoop on what's going on.
We get an email.
And, and, and yes, we'll share the email. We get an email. So, uh, we're going to try to get you all that information. And guys, it is such a busy season with everything going on. There's Santa at the detention. Santa's been all over the place. Uh, don't forget, uh, the elves and el, elves and its, uh, winter market event that's going on December 13th from eight AM to 5:00 PM. And that's, uh, the Warren County Athletic Facility. Um, and there's going to be, uh, Santa pictures there from 10 to 2:00 PM. And, uh, I may know a little something about that as well. Um, that's going to be exciting because I understand there's just going to be a lot of vendors and different people there. Um, and there's going to be cards, 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 to my understanding, uh, lots of stuff to do. So, um, just follow the balloons. So, uh, yeah, you'll, you can follow Santa. Santa will let you know, uh, a little more about that coming up. Uh, let's see. Uh, we had, uh, Mr. Cody Jones on yesterday and we were talking about, uh, the family. You can check, uh, yesterday's, um, face, uh, Facebook feed for that. Uh, but we want to make sure, uh, that we get, uh, that family taken care of and remember them in your prayers and donate if you can. Uh, Cody was showing me a vehicle that if they're able to raise $2,000 for, he can get them, uh, that, that vehicle. So, uh, we're going to continue praying for that, that.
You know, it found out that the mom and the grandbaby were in, they were in on the fire. So like they don't back into it.
So, so the mother and the grandbaby were in the home whenever it was, it caught fire and, uh, were able to escape. Um, so that, that was another bit of information that we didn't have yesterday. Uh, all kinds of other events going on. We've still got the fill the truck, um, event that's going on. Um, and we want to make sure that we get that ambulance packed out with all the goodies that we do. Uh, we still got Ms. Annabelle Caldwell's, uh, event, uh, in, um, also with Casa. We want to make sure that they get all the things that they need for her goal of making, uh, so many baskets. And I can't remember how many baskets in particular. At least a hun, at least a hundred bags that they're trying to fill for that. So we've got things and some work to do. We'll try to get a report and find out how much we need and when that. All right. Well, uh, it, it, is she in school? I, I think she is. All right. We'll, we'll, we'll find out and try to get you guys some more information and let you know, uh, about that. But we've got a lot of things, uh, that are going on still. And, um, we've got, we've got, uh, let's see, some of the stuff has already happened. That, that was the gingerbread, uh, thing. Uh, here it is.
You go to the Miller Recreation Center, they have some, uh, float banners. And then the tonight's will win 32 people's toys, both millions and prizes.
Okay, okay. So, uh, again, and let me tell you, uh, okay, we'll go back to that. I got filled the ambulance up right now. Fill the ambulance Christmas drive, uh, the hall, uh, this holiday season, Warren County EMS Rescue is teaming up with our community to spread kindness and joy. Help us fill ambulance with items for families and pets in need. And let's go through the list of stuff that they need. Uh, we're collecting toys and gifts for kids, boys and girls clothing, dog and cat food, treats and blankets, non-perishable food items for families, blankets and comfort items. Where to donate? Warren County EMS Station One across from TCAT, Warren County Courthouse, uh, Judge Ryan Moore's office. Christmas in the Village, uh, which has already passed, uh, but Warren County High School home basketball games in December. And Walmart McMinville on December 6th, um, well, that, that's already passed. But, uh, please drop these donations off by Friday, December 20th. That's the little date I was trying to get. Friday, December 20th. We need to get that stuff. You can go to our Facebook page and find this. And I'll tell you what, let me just pull, I'm going to copy this photo link off and I'm going to paste it on, uh, right now. So you don't have to go. And hey, we found out who Maude is. Maude is Alma Shoemaker.
I thought so. I thought it looked like her coming.
Good morning, Alma Shoemaker. And thank you for joining us. We're so blessed to have you on here.
She's a part of the Nativity Festival.
Yes. That, hey, look, that Nativity Festival is going to be so, and I'm so excited.
Ask her, how many does she expect to have out this year?
Ms. Shoemaker, how many do we expect to have out there? Listen, I'm, I, I've heard that there's been lines of folks, uh, going through and, and, uh, so that's always, always a big time. All right. This link, there you go. If you want to go to that, uh, Facebook photo, that will take you to our EMS, uh, Rescue Squad, um, link where people can, well, one of them has, has posted. Um, so we'll go back. Now let's go to Milner Recreation Center. Because they have. All right. So. What they've got posted at the top is the Miller Recreation Center will be closed. And this is for their Thanksgiving hours.
You gotta scroll.
So we're scrolling down.
Look for, they got the pictures like, uh, that's a wrap, I think, so.
Okay. Man, I'm seeing stuff back in August. Is it Milner Recreation or McMinville Parks and Recreation?
Uh, I was saying McMinville Parks.
Oh, that's got a McMinville Parks and Recreation.
Sorry.
That's all right. Live. There we go. And guys, we are live and it's great to be with you folks today. McMinville Parks and Recreation. Oh, I got it. I got it here now. All right. So let's go to this story right here. Um, that's a wrap on the 2025 Christmas Parade. Thank you all to 113 participants in making this an incredible parade. Thank you. Champion Chevrolet GMC of McMinville. That's one of our sponsors. And go out and see Alex and the guys down there at Champion Chevrolet. Go test drive one of those EV vehicles. The electric vehicles are incredible. I've, I, I, listen. I'm, I'm going to have to do some smoozing with Mrs. Claus, but that is so much fun. Also Tractor Supply Company, thank you for your support. Now what you've been waiting for, parade winners, below the category winners. The business category, first place goes to Huff and Puff Trucking Company, second to Meadows Homes. The church and civic groups, community organizations slash large nonprofit. Number one goes to the First Assembly of God, number two to Three Rivers Baptist Church. And the, uh, third place goes to the Warren County Sheriff's Office. What was that? Yeah, there was a huge boom, guys, that happened just here. Uh, I mean.
I can see it's some truck, probably.
There was a. Yeah, we probably had a truck over here, uh, uh, hit something or, or come up. Yeah, that, that, I don't know that you guys heard that, but there was a loud boom here, um, right outside. All right, back to our, uh, our school sponsored, um, winners. First place goes to the Warren County 4H Club. Congratulations. Um, second place goes to Boyd Christian School Elementary. Uh, the third place goes to Boyd Christians Middle School. And we've got the small club slash nonprofit. Uh, first place goes to the Nine U Pioneer Baseball. Uh, second place goes to Girl Scout Troop 656 and third place goes to Ride and Drive Club. Uh, now this is Ride and Drive Horse Rider, uh, Club slash Mule, uh, Horse and Hitch. Okay. So Horse Rider Club slash Mule or Horse and Hitch. So this is ones that weren't pulled by a truck. These are ones that were pulled by a, a horse or mule. So number one goes to Lane Murphy and number two goes to Brittany Bombard. Congratulations, guys. And we have an antique car, um, category. And first place goes to Frank Bond and second place goes to Commissioner Blaine Wiltord and third place goes to Alan Dodd. Now this is really. Now, this is really interesting. Most unusual vehicle, number one goes to Auto World Inc. Uh, number, uh, second place goes to Marcus Kirby. The third place goes to Capital Waste Services. Best band, you guessed it, guy. You guessed it, folks. Warren County Pioneer Pride Band. They are the best band in the land in my opinion. Um, and that's including the middle school too. And the People's Choice Award is up to you. Voting is open in the comments below. From 1:30, uh, today till 1:30 PM tomorrow, which is today. It stops at 1:30 today. So leave the name.
Families in Crisis.
Leave, leave the name of the float you love and, uh, most, and submit your vote. Pictures are courtesy of the Main Street Journal here and there's a whole bunch of pictures on here that you can take a look at. But Warren first was involved in this and we, uh, were co-sponsored with Families in Crisis. So we really want to recommend and we're using, I don't know if we have journalistic integrity, but this is part of our thing that we do. Go vote Families in Crisis. That's what we want. Families in Crisis. And look, when you vote, uh, for these things, it lets people know what you're supporting. And hey, we've got a great organization that helps out so many, uh, especially women in particular. We do service some men, but, uh, it's primarily women and we're so grateful, uh, because we're blessed to live in a community that values its women and gives them shelter and a place to go, not just them, but their children as well. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Christie and all the wonderful people at Families in Crisis. And, uh, thank you, Kelly, for working so hard on top of all the other things. Um, but the newspaper is coming out and it is, uh, but it is almost done. And so guys bear with us, but, uh, this is the busy season and there's just so much. As you can tell from having Mr. Joe Harvey on and talking about all the things at the park theater, to all the things that happened last week. Uh, from our story, uh, about Mr. Chris Stanford, our DA that resigned, uh, to what's going, making some clarifications there. To all kinds of things. So make sure that you sign up for the local voice. And if you want delivery, make sure that you, now that will, will cost you. Uh, but, uh, you can go to any of our social medias. You can always message us. Uh, you can always find us at the local voice and, uh, let us know, uh, what you're looking for. But if you know somebody who wants to read a real paper, who wants to sit down and read paper print, that's what the local voice is for. And so on top of all the other stories, you can always get us through digital media, through email and whatnot. But if you want, if, if you're a classic reader, let us know. If you want to get a subscription for somebody for Christmas. Hey, local voice subscriptions make really good stocking stuffers and, um, we can make that happen. So guys, thank you so much. Always make sure to like and subscribe to all our different media outlets. With, when you do that, it boosts our algorithm for more people to be exposed to what's going on here at Warren First 931. Guys, it has been a great show. Kelly, are we forgetting anything? I don't think I've even drank.
My father's closet, the Magnus Library.
Oh my goodness, my father's closet, the Magnus Library.
And the, uh, Happy Holidays Music Mondays. I think the next one is next week for the, it's on the Facebook page.
All right, let's, uh, let's go back to the Facebook page and see. All right, let's see what we got here. All right. If we go back to the Facebook page, uh, oh my goodness, we've got so much on here. And it is a little, it could be a little overwhelming, but hey, man, we're in the Christmas spirit. Guys, we've got some special events coming on. Uh, again, we told you, uh, Wednesday, we're going to be over at, um, the Nativity, uh, event, but we've also got some filming today. We've got some projects that we're working on. Uh, we've got some folks that have some amazing Christmas spirit and we want to celebrate that Christmas spirit with them. Old Santa's going to be doing some interviews at some folks' houses and letting you get the inside peek on what's going behind those, uh, decorated doors. Also, uh, we've got, uh, December 15th, the Symphonic Band at the Warren County High School Auditorium. So make plans to visit that and it is a $5 cover charge for that. And all those proceeds go to help the Warren County High School Band. Uh, and then, uh, let's see. Uh, we're going back. Oh, here we go. The Storytime. And, uh, this is at the Magnus Library. And we've got upcoming the 10th and 11th. Um, that'll be going on for the pre-case Storytime. And, uh, song story and crafts or activities each week. Wednesdays at 10:00 AM and 1:00, uh, PM. Uh, on Thursdays, uh, I'm sorry, Wednesdays at 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM and Thursdays at 10:00 AM. You don't have to sign up, uh, just choose one program per week to attend. And then in January, uh, they're going to be doing pets. And on the seventh and eighth, it's the dog. On the 14th and 15th, it's cats. On the 21st and 22nd, it's birds. On the 28th and 29th of January, it's hamsters. So we want to encourage everybody and guys, I'll tell you, I love the Magnus Library. It's one of my favorite stops, especially when Santa gets to come for Christmas in the park. Always a big time there. And if you ever get a chance to, to see, uh, uh, the lady who does the marionette puppets, oh my goodness. It is wonderful. And I'll tell you, it is so, uh, so calm. I mean, it's so peaceful and serene. I, I feel like I could just snuggle up in a good chair with my hot cocoa that they serve and sausage balls and fall right to sleep. But we got that coming up. And then, uh, the, the Shop with a Cop program, December 20th for my father's closet. This is the fifth annual, um, uh, event, uh, free to all Warren County foster and kinship families ages five to 11. For applications, comment below and send us a private message or email and, uh, the address below. And that's, the email is myfather'sclosettn@gmail.com and we'll read what they posted on here. We're thrilled to announce that our fifth annual shop with a cop program is happening December 20th. This free event is open to all foster and kinship families in the Warren County, in Warren County with children ages five to 11. Kids will enjoy an hour of early Christmas shopping courtesy of my father's closet, paired with some of our incredible men and women in law enforcement. Applications are first come, first served and will close on December 12th. So you only have a few days for that, guys. For more information or more details, check out the flyer below. Please like, comment and share. Help spread the word. We can't wait to see everyone there. Guys, I'm going to go ahead and hit this and I'm going to take this link and I'm going to post it on the feed right now, what we're doing. So you'll know exactly where to get this if you can find it. So let's paste this. Guys, I apologize. I've been running around without this being shared. You're just going to have to beat me with a wet noodle, guys. But yes, this is the shop with the cop program from my father's closet. Going down right now is the link. So if you look at the comments, you'll find the link to be able to get to this. Um, and so, and I tell you, since we're here, we're going to go back and share the other link. For the Storytime. So if you're watching this or listening to it again, you can come over here and find it a lot quicker. All right. Well, thank you, Magnus Library, and thank you for all the people that are working. Hey, we've got a, uh, to my understanding, we're going to have some new employees over at the Magnus Library coming up here soon, maybe after the school year gets in. So guys, stay tuned because there's going to be so much going on in McMinnville. Ah, man, I can't even believe we're even talking about summertime already, but, uh, Joe Harvey started it. I'm going to blame Joe Harvey for it. Because here he was talking about the spring concert series that they got with the bluegrass that's going to be going on and all the things. Thank you, Joe Harvey for being in. Thank you, guys, for making comments. Megan and, and, uh, Ms. Alma and, uh, uh, our, let's see. Our good friend, Mr. Derek, we love you. Donna Carr, thank you so much, mom. Ms. Rita and Ms. Tina at our coffee. Guys, you can always, uh, find us on all the different media outlets. You can go to Twitter, I mean, X. Uh, you can go to, uh, YouTube, Facebook. Uh, our Instagram is a little, uh, shaky right now. So we're going to try to seal that one out and get that, uh, and hey, guys, starting in the year, it looks like we're going to get back on TikTok. Now that we think that that's all ironed out and everything. But guys, we've got so many different social media platforms. We want to thank all our sponsors, all the people that help us out. Stacey's Wellness Pharmacy, our good friends at Sonic, uh, McMinnville. Uh, we also want to, uh, uh, thank, uh, our, uh, Tri-County Citizens Bank, uh, right behind us here. We also want to thank our good friend, Mr. Scotty Keel and the folks at McMinnville Lawn and Garden. And I want to tell you something real quick about, uh, McMinnville Lawn and Garden. They do all kinds of stuff. If there's a project that you're needing to have done, um, say it's a trailer repair or something like that. This is a great time to contact, uh, our good friends at, uh, McMinnville Lawn and Garden because they've got all kinds of things that they're doing, uh, from servicing chainsaws and, uh, lawn mowers and different equipment. This is a time to get that stuff in and guys, you better winterize your stuff. Hopefully you've been running no ethanol, um, fuel through it. But no, seriously, you need to make sure that you get that stuff taken care of and our good friends at McMinnville Lawn and Garden can help you with that. Guys, I was going to do, uh, National Day today and I want to do it real quick because it's lutefish day. And Santa doesn't know what lutefish is, so he's going to read about it real quick. On December 9th, lutefish day reminds residents of Norway, Finland and Sweden to begin preparing their lutefish for Christmas. Uh, this day is also referred to as Anna's Day. In case you're not Scandinavian, lutefish is basically cod that gets soaked in lime. After the cod is caught, it's dried to the point of becoming firm and leathery to tenderize it, the fish, and bring it back to its former condition to eat. It's soaked in lime. Once it's nice and tender, lutefish is skin and bone. So, hey, happy lutefish day. Also, it's happy Christmas card day. So I'm going to hit this one and see what it, what it says. Or I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's Christmas card day. All right. It's not going. It's also National Pastry Day. In fact, and finally with, all right, uh, Christmas card day. Each year around this time, friends and families begin mailing their holiday cards. Christmas card day on December 9th serves as a reminder to get your stamps, envelopes and cards together so you can share your holiday cheer. Uh, sending the Christmas card during the holidays hasn't always been a tradition. In Victorian England, sending penny post was inexpensive and, uh, and frequent. It was also considered rude to ignore a written message. One particularly popular Victorian, uh, invented the holiday card out of necessity. Sir Henry Cole received frequent letters and it left him a little time, uh, or left him little time for responsibilities. In 1843, he asked his friend J.C. Horsley to illustrate the design he had in mind. Soon Cole was off to the printer and he mailed the first Christmas card in the penny post to friends, family and many acquaintances. So that's the beginning of the Christmas card there, guys. And one more thing, it is Where Willie Day. Let, look, I'm not making this up. Where's the Where Willie Day? And hopefully you can see this. I'm scared to find out what, what this is, but, uh, you know, I really want you to, to see that I'm not making this up. But this is Where Willie Day, December 9th. Where Willie Day on December 9th recognizes the art of clowning and the impact it has on our lives. This holiday was named for the character made famous by Emmett Kelly, who was born on this day in 1898. Where Willie was a unique character in the art of clowning. Kelly had developed Where Willie at a time when the white-faced goofy clown was the norm and selling the idea for a sad, down on his luck clown did not fit the formula, uh, most circuses were seeking. For the time being, Kelly put back on the white face and brightly colored costume. Times and audience changed when the country was in the depths of the Great Depression. Downtrodent and world, and world weary was the face of the nation. People could identify with Where Willie like never before. Where, Where Willie, his frowning whisker sha- shadowed face and his dirty torn worn costume went on to become an American icon. Guys, this is the beginning of the clown hobo. His son Emmett Kelly carried on Where Willie's, uh, persona well into the modern area, era until his death in 2003 at the age of 83. So wear some big shoes, pantomime or grab a bunch of people and pile into a tiny car. Clown College could be just around the corner while clowning around. Stock up on a pair of our crazy socks to entertain folks. Learn more about Where Willie, read Clown, um, read Clown, My Life in Tatters and Smiles by Emmett Kelly. Or Emmett Kelly, The Greatest Clown on Earth by Donald McManus. Uh, watch The Clown starring Henry Fonda as Emmett Kelly. And another film about clowns is Grease Paint. The documentary follows a family of clowns for a year. You can find it on Amazon. So, man, you learn something new every day. Hey, guys, we're going to seal it up there on Where Willie Day. And let me get back to where I am. Where's Brian? Oh, hey. Guys, it has been a blessing to be with you here on this terrific Tuesday. I hope you guys had a terrific Tuesday. Uh, I hope you, uh, have a, uh, a great holiday season. Anything we can do to help, please let us know. Uh, guys, looking forward to, uh, our pop in tomorrow. Uh, also going to be doing student of the week here soon. Got so much stuff going on here in Warren County. Just be, uh, looking out for your copy of the local voice. And if you don't have a copy of the local voice, you need to go to one of our sponsors that, uh, services the local voice. And you need to sign up with us, guys. Again, it's always been a blessing to be with you. And remember, you can be a blessing or you can be cursed, but always keep it first. Have a great day, guys.